We'll call the meeting to order. We'll begin this meeting this evening with a ceremonial oath of office for our new and renewed board members. And in lieu of reading this six paragraph introduction, I think we will just disperse with that voice is going to be giving out soon. And individually, I will ask you to stand up, raise your right hand, and I think you all have a copy of your oath of office somewhere.
For picture purposes, would you mind both standing up? Just for one picture, stand up and raise your hand? And then one of you can sit down. I really appreciate it, thank you. Oh, that's great, thank you.
I swear, affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state, and that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of school board member of the independent school district number 252 to the best of my judgment and ability.
I swear, affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state, and that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of school board member of independent school district number 252 to the best of my judgment and ability.
I swear, affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state, and that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of school board member of independent school district number 252 to the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you.
It will be maybe a picture at the end of all three of you, even though you two are new and you're not.
We should congratulate these. And did I not call this meeting to order? Let's all stand face a flag and a sword and climb into the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit, with liberty and justice for all. Do you have any changes or any...
There's nothing for tonight, everything's pretty laid out.
Okay. Having said that, I would look for a motion for someone to approve the agenda as shown.
Let me make a motion, just enter agenda.
Brenda on the motion, Bill on the second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Organization, organization of the board. We will now be looking for nominees of these four categories, chair, vice chair, clerk, and treasurer. Do the best you can.
You guys can, Ashley, you can go in the corner if there's anyone.
So nominations are...
I'd like to nominate Katie.
Katie nominated, Katie Lochner as chair. Any other nominees?
I'll nominate Bob.
Bob Britnall?
Bob Britnall, yeah.
That's Bob, also as nominee. Are there any other nominees? Any other nominees? With the third and final time, any nominees? Nominations are closed. And I think by a hand raise, we will now vote for chairman. All those in favor of Katie Lochner, raise your hand. Katie and Anna. All those in favor of Bob Britnall, raise your hand. Brenda, Bill, and Bob. By a three-two vote, Bob will continue as board chairman. Thank you for your trust. Election of vice chair. Nominations are now open.
I'd like to nominate Brenda.
Brenda nominated for vice chair. Are there other nominees? Are there other nominees? Third and final time, any other nominees? Okay, by acclamation, Brenda is the vice chair. Brenda, congratulations. Election of clerk, delegating statutory duties to the office of business affairs. As usual, we let, we let the office staff do a great deal of our work. Where clerks are signatures, third in line for meetings and such, but statutory duties will continue to be done by the office as always. Nominations are now open for the position of clerk. Are there any nominees?
I'll nominate Katie.
Brenda has nominated Katie. Are there any nominees? Third and final time, are there any other nominees? By acclamation, Katie is the clerk. Congratulations, Katie. Election of treasurer, same statutory duties. Nominations are now open for the office of treasurer.
I would nominate Anna.
Anna has been nominated. Are there any other nominees? Third and final time, any other nominees for the position of treasurer? Okay, we'll close nominations. By acclamation, Anna is the treasurer of the board. Thank you, congrats. Consideration to appoint a school board member due to a vacancy. As we all know, Jerry has moved to a, a new district and is not able to fulfill his requirements. Because of the 90-day rule, we are, we are faced with appointing a member who will be, who will begin their service 30 days from today, and their service will conclude in November at the regular voting Tuesday. At that time, there will be, there will be a vote for that position. So one year appointed, voting for one year, and then in the regular cycle of elections, there will be another vote. So this person will have potentially three votes in two years. So we can discuss as a board, the applications that have been submitted, and then after that, we will follow the same course as we do for the organization of the board with nominations, and no seconds are required, and then a vote on the nominees presented. If all three, if all three are nominated, then we'll vote on three. If two are nominated, we'll vote on two. If one is nominated, acclamation. So does anyone want to begin the conversation about the vacancy and any appointee that they'd like to speak to? All three of them have given us some years of volunteerism. Rod has been a past board member. Both Mike and Nels have run for board in the past. So they've showed their commitment to our school, they've shown their commitment to the community in so many ways as well. So as a board, we should feel very happy and proud that we get the quality that we've gotten here. So having said that, does anyone have anything else to say?
I'd like to thank all three of them for putting their names out there and, and being willing to take part in this, part in this year. And so thank you for stepping up for our kids and our community.
I just was curious, after your comments around potentially three votes, if there's any discussion on the applicants, part of that...
Appointee.
Appointee and the process that will be necessary.
Ten months until the next vote or so.
Exactly, and then a vote, and then one year. Concerns, issues, what do you want to...
You know, in a manner of speaking, it's, it's probably a good thing for the new member, the potential new member, because they get to see if it really fits them, rather than commit to a four-year term, which can be, can be long. Okay, if there's no other discussion, I would open for nominations for the board member to be appointed. Are there any nominations?
I would nominate Mike Dalton.
Bill, nominate Dalton. Are there any other nominations?
I would nominate Nelson.
I'll nominate Rod Johnson.
Nominations are now closed, based on the three applicants. It can present somewhat of a turmoil if it gets to be tied votes, we'll, we don't have any established procedure, and according to Greg Abbott, it seems like we can discuss procedure.
You'll vote for one person.
Could we just have a larger board of nine people?
Exactly, exactly. We are a very, very few boards have only six people. Right, yeah, it's very unusual, yeah.
Okay, nominations are closed, and we will take them in order of the nomination, just for some type of continuity. By a show of hands, all those who would vote for Mike Dalton, raise your hand. Three votes. According to Mr. Abbott, that would close the vote, because there's no way anyone else could win. So congratulations to Dalton on your one-year appointment. And we need a resolution, I believe, right?
I have it up on the screen. Yep.
That would be the clerk, who's going to read, and I think you can do the...
Is it in the... It's here too? It's in the packet, I'm gonna take that.
Yeah, I have, I have plenty of copy there.
The whole thing? Okay. The last paragraph. Yep. All right, resolution filing school board vacancy by appointment. Whereas a vacancy exists in the office of school board member with a term expiring on the first Monday in January 2021, and whereas the vacancy occurred more than 90 days prior to the first Tuesday after the first Monday in November in the year the vacancy occurred and prior to the fourth year of the vacant term. Now therefore be it resolved by the school board of independent school district 252, state of Minnesota as follows. Pursuant to the Minnesota statute section 123B dash zero nine...
Subsection.
Subsection 5B.
It's hard, I know.
Mike Dalton is hereby appointed to fill the vacancy and to serve until a successor is elected and qualified. The appointment shall be elective 30 days after the adoption of this resolution unless a valid petition to reject the appointee is filed with the school district clerk pursuant to Minnesota statute sections 123B point zero nine subsection 5B be within that 30-day time period.
Okay, that makes it official. Until next election, Mike, thank you, and thank you all again. Moving down, establish the time and meeting place for board meetings. Meetings have been always held on the second, fourth Mondays at 6:00 PM with a scheduled meeting on the fourth Monday during the four months that are showing. That's not set in stone, because we've heard the calls in the past with those one-meeting months. So as you, as you read down, you can see what our, our meeting dates are. We don't read on federal holidays, and there's, in our packet, there's a number of dates that we don't, by law, we need. So I would look for a motion to approve the meeting time and place as shown.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting time as shown.
Katie Lochner on the motion.
Second.
Seconded by Anna. Further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Carry. Selection of the official paper. We don't have many official papers in this town, so it's been the Cannon Falls Beacon all this year, all these years, so I would look for a motion to approve the official newspaper as the beacon. Bill, you moved?
Yep. Seconded.
Seconded by Brenda. Other discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Carry. Designation of the official posting place for school board meeting notices is the district office and the website.
Again, this is very procedural, it's what we've always done, it works out really well. I would recommend just kind of continuing with the process that people are used to.
Board meetings, any special meetings are posted in one of two spots. One of them is right outside the hall here, isn't it?
And then if you get on the webpage, you just link on the school board, drop down, it's very easy, people can print those, they can reference those, it's, you know, even students that are here for a meeting can go back and get the minutes, and that's a really great way to do it.
Okay, look for a motion to approve the designated spots.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Katie, second?
Second.
Seconded by Bill. Other discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Carry. Designation of depository in accordance with Minnesota statute 118A dash 02.
I put it up on the screen, just so you can see the rotation of our banks. Some of you that have been on the board formerly maybe remember doing it every year, that became really ineffective for the district office staff. We've been doing it every three years, and it works really well. So you'll see that rotation up there. My recommendation again would be to stay with this process, it works really well. And there is the statute attached, if you'd like to read that as well.
You said three, it's really five.
Five, yeah. We do reevaluate it at the end of three, they can remove themselves from that, because sometimes when they, they have that option. And that's important too, because statuses of banks change as well, but we're, we like to stay the five if we can, but three is when we, we have that conversation with the bank.
Okay. All three of the banks are aware and comfortable with that.
It's one, it's been a great process, it really has been.
Okay, all in favor of the, the depository and the schedule herein, say aye.
Do we need a motion? I'm so moved. You're brand new to this.
I'm already, I'm already about three down. We need a motion, I guess, huh?
So moved.
Seconded.
Anna on the motion. Brenda on the second. Other discussion? Now let's vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Carry. Designation of the board's legal counsel and authorized contacts, we use Ratwick, the office personnel superintendent and board chairman of the authorized contact people. I know that a couple of years ago, Rob had requested that we do an audit to make sure that we were getting the best bang for the buck with Ratwick, and we were by quite a sight at that time.
We did it again this year, just to be sure, and it is again that way, and just having that relationship with them is so important. So it would be my recommendation just to stay with Ratwick again. We've had them for quite a while, and they are the best bang for the buck, so that would be my recommendation.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve Ratwick, the continuance of Ratwick as our legal counsel?
I'll make a motion to continue with Ratwick.
Katie on the motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Bill. Other discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Carry. Establish the annual salary for board members. We have in the past had some people say, "We get paid to do this." It's true. I started out at $400 a year, so you can tell from how long I've been around, but we recently increased it to 1,250, in part because we were falling so far behind some of the other districts, that the natural progression would then have been, we'd go from, let's say, $600 to 25, just to catch up. So it was one of those things where we made incremental increases, and as you can see, it gets, it gets doled out twice a year, and... Yep? Anything, anything for this, besides that?
No, a lot of the districts in the area haven't changed, so I think keeping it consistent would be the logical thing to do. I think what a lot of people don't know, and you'll learn very quickly, is that there are so many meetings and so many things you attend, and whether it's daycare, or it's missing your own employment, both of you are coming to the conference, and you have to take off from your own employment to go to those things, so it is important that there's a stipend involved. I think it's, when you add up the hours, it's very, very small. Thank you for all that you do.
Yeah, we have to keep the stipend the same.
Motion by Brenda to keep the stipend the same. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Katie. Any other discussion?
I think it's just important to point out that, you know, with the way it's set up here, is that it's a stipend, and there's no additional for the officers, which is a big deal, because, you know, there's more responsibility involved with those officer positions, potential other meetings, and there's no design around being paid for board meetings or committee meetings also.
All of what you see on many other districts. So, good point. Okay, we have a motion, the second. All in favor of keeping the stipend as it currently is at 1,250, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Carry. Authorization of the impress fund.
This is a fund that allows us to keep a small amount of petty cash in the office, things like, oh my gosh, rob stamps, you know, those kinds of things. It's a very small petty cash amount that is kept in the office for those types of things. We have not changed this procedure in a long time, it works out well, so it would be my recommendation to continue it.
Do we have a motion to authorize the impress fund? So, motion by Bill. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Anna. Any other discussion? All in favor of the authorization of the impress fund, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Carry. Payroll authorization for the facsimile signature on payroll and voucher checks in accordance with MS 4741 and 4742.
It almost feels a little odd that you have to approve to pay our staff, but you do have to approve that once a year, and it would be my recommendation to do that. We need to get everyone paid.
Motion here.
I'll make a motion for payroll, payroll authorization.
Motion by Katie, do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Anna. Other discussion?
Facsimile signature, would that be Anna?
Yes, yes. I had to think of who our new person was all of a sudden. I had to go, where did it go? Yeah, so they ended it with you, so yes, that would be you.
It'll be here somewhere.
Yes, thank you, good luck with your case.
Okay. All in favor of the facsimile payroll and voucher checks in accordance with those statutes, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve the resolution of combined polling place for 19 slash 20.
Now, you may remember this from last year, there's been some discussion on where polling places could be, should be, and all of those types of things. You'll see on here, the combined polling places are the Cannon Falls City Hall, which is 918 River Road, if you pay your rent, you know where that goes. It is a logical location to have the polling place to be. So I believe, from Lori's perspective, this would be a strong recommendation to have our combined polling place be City Hall.
Make a motion.
It's a resolution.
Resolution.
Resolution, oh.
Resolution, I do as we, we vote for a second and resolve.
So where do you read from, from?
You can do number two.
Number two, just then at the end of where the location?
First we, yep, first we approve, and then we resolve, right? Okay. Please make a motion for the resolution to combine polling place.
And I just did.
You're so quiet.
Thought it was the wrong time.
And I'm so hard of hearing, so, yes. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Bill. You have a motion in the second?
All right, the resolution for establishing a combined, combined polling place pursuant to Minnesota statute section 205A dash 11, the board may establish a combined polling place for several precincts for school district elections not held on the day of statewide election. Each combined polling place must be a polling place that has been designated by a county or municipality. The following combined polling places are established to serve the precincts specified for all school districts, special and general elections not held on the same day as statewide election. Combined polling place is the Cannon Falls City Hall, 918 River Road, Cannon Falls, Minnesota, 55009. So, was that in favor?
Yeah, a yes vote.
Yes vote, would it be in favor? So Brenda?
Yes.
Katie? Yes. Anna? Phil?
Yes.
And Bob?
Yes. That passes by a five-zero vote. Thank you. Also, authorization of the superintendent to approve purchases up to 10 grand.
Yeah, we switched this last year from five to 10. What it allows us to do is when we're making a purchase of special technology or something like that, those purchases are already built into the budget, and it allows us to keep things going and not waiting for that next board meeting. I feel strongly that anything over 10,000 needs to be a discussion item, and sometimes, even if it's close to 10, and it's not built into a specific, you know, facilities or technology or something like that, I bring it forward anyway, because I think those items are good to be discussed. It would be my recommendation to stay at 10, I wouldn't want to go any higher than that, I wouldn't feel comfortable with that. So it would be my recommendation, we tried it out last year, and it worked really well.
Really well. So we're giving the superintendent authorization for purchases up to 10 grand.
And remember, those are things that are already in the, you've already approved the overall budget, so they're not anything additional.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Anna. Zero second.
Seconded.
Seconded by Brenda. Other discussion?
So I guess this past year was the first year we moved from five to 10, so how many times would you have?
Twice. Not twice. It was mostly for technology purchases. You've already approved, you know, the 270,000, but when you purchase those, sometimes the item can come in at like $11,000. Well, we know we're ordering them for the whole district, so it just came in, but I did do it twice. And again, anything else that came up, like, we had some conversation on skid loader or, you know, facility type things, and I just, because that's a bigger discussion, I bring them forward, because even though we have money in the facilities, it really is important that we have those discussions, what, what our fleet to look like. I think that's more the discussion item than $10,000 in technology. Like buying textbooks for 62,000, and that's what textbooks cost, you know what I mean? So we just have to use some kind of common sense there too.
Okay, we have a motion, the second on the floor. All in favor of the authorization of the superintendent to approve purchases up to $10,000, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Carry. Designation of the superintendent as the LEA rep in the Iowa, 2019.
This is the law, you have to have a licensed LEA on your staff at all times, that is, you know, districts, the superintendent. So again, it's one of those kind of, you have to do it, you have to have an LEA. It would be the recommendation to make it the superintendent.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Katie on the motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Anna. Further discussion? All in favor of designating the superintendent as the LEA, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That is carry. Next page, I was... Next one here. This is a copy of the assignments that we have, and I asked the administrator and others to kind of chime in here, because we seem to get more, not less. And some of these are ad hoc committees, and we need eight standing committees by statute, by policy as well. But some of these things where we don't meet very often, I was, I was trying to get some agreement on merging them, especially the ad hoc with maybe some of the standing committees that don't meet as often. So with some help from Beth and Lori, and our admin... So with some help from Beth and Lori and our admin, I did merge some of these and please squawk if you want to. But the first committee, I thought we would, we would deal with finance and facility together. And, you know, we talked about different ones in budget as well, but, you know, these, they seem to meet, so there'd probably be a meeting a month between these two, so I think that's very doable. And Bill in his capacity cannot be involved with the finance or the treasury at all, due to his work capacity, so. I thought this would fit our new member, give them a chance to dive in. So Mike would be our board rep for finance and facility. I will be the alternate. Bob will be the alternate, just so we get some continuity and get the learning curve, if you will, together.
Finance and facility?
Finance and. And if this becomes a mistake for us, we'll just change it next year.
The only time I think that finance would be really active is when we go back to look at a levy or something like that becomes a very active group, but we've got a few years left on that as well.
So Mike and Bob on this one. Curriculum, technology, and we tech. Curriculum and technology go so hand in hand now that in order for them to drive one another, I think it was important to put those two together. And then you'd also be a representative for we tech, which is a every other month meeting down in.
It's once a month, every month.
Okay. Kurt said every other.
Well, they took turns.
Ah, then that would fit.
So they did go every other, but they took turns.
It's in the evening.
Correct. And that is a paid, that is a paid meeting.
Yep, and it's, was down in Zimbro.
Zimbro, typically.
So that's a six P M. meeting and I forget what Kurt said, maybe the second Thursday of the month or something, but we can, we can feed that out, but. I asked Anna if she'd take a swing at this and she said she would. So Anna will be the board rep for the curriculum, technology, we tech. And Mike will be an alternate. Staff development, G C E D. I put those together in that they seem to fit and that was your recommendation as well, I think, putting staff development, G C E D together. Katie has said she would do that for us, so continue in that role. And I was going to ask Brenda if she would alternate with that. Or be the alternate for that.
Okay, yes.
Okay. Transportation. Anna has requested to be on transportation. Excuse me. I think that fits just fine. And that meets, I guess, quarterly probably. So again, it's not, it's not.
The contract is coming up, so it'll be a few more, yeah.
I thought, again, that would be a good position for a new member, Mr. Dalton. And I'm working a mayor. So Anna and Mike Dalton would be the alternate for that. An alternate means just that if you're not able to show or come to a meeting, then you would make some contact with that alternate. Mostly these meetings would meet at right after the routes, seven fifteen, seven thirty, I think, something like that. Next one is community ed and the Ed Foundation. We haven't met as often as we should with the community ed. That's going to change this year, I'm sure. We'll just meet on a more regular basis. Brenda has consented to doing the Ed Foundation and community ed. She's been our liaison at Foundation for quite some time. And I, I think it would fit Bill if he was the alternate to that. That's, again, mostly morning meetings. And community ed, they're kind of flexible as their meeting times. I know that Brenda has said in the past that Mondays and Fridays work best, but I'll let you guys fill that out. The next one, M S B A and Minnesota State High School League slash extracurricular and policy are together. Policy doesn't meet as regular. It meets when we have situations like the pledge of allegiance a couple of years ago and we had people that wanted to change that policy. Normally, these are all set forth by the, by statute and policy and you can refer to them whenever you choose.
You have M S B A here. We, we meet all the time and talk about it and talk about policies a lot. They're in the room bottom.
Hi. How is it meant to be straightforward?
Oh goodness.
You can slap my hands anytime you want. Just raise your hand, all this.
As needed.
The, really, the extracurricular is kind of involved with this, but that's what would be more of an ad hoc as well, I think. Because issues involving concerns that have to do with our extracurricular. I thought, I thought Bill would fit that very well with Katie being the alternate. And the last one is personnel slash negotiations. Upcoming negotiations, right?
Yep, we had quite a few this year. Teachers, for sure.
We, we lost two of our negotiators last time. And as a rule, what we have is we have two board members plus an alternate and have trainees in the past. So I've asked Bill to assist and Bill and I will be on the negotiations team with Katie as the alternate. Alternates have, have come to all of our meetings in the past. It's, it's hard to be an alternate if you're not showing up at the meetings regularly because you've got to be brought forward. So look for that. And Anna would like to be a trainee and I really support that. So I'd ask you to come and your capacity would be mostly to sit and listen and catch bases flying after the flies, things like that. So that would be the personnel and negotiation committee. I think I got them all.
Okay.
I don't know if that requires a vote on that. That's just appointee by the board chair, so we can move on from there. Reports and communication. Up next are administrative reports.
I think those are tonight, aren't they? Do we have reports tonight? They could be. No, I don't, we don't, they won't, unless they have something.
Do you have something for us? Jen, do you have anything you'd like to contribute? It's not your night.
Only because Tim does, but. Just a couple of things that Alice, the Alice team is continuing to train any adults that come into the building, so whether that be book buddies or substitutes. We are continuing to make sure that they are trained in our procedures. I am currently, as probably Tim is, in the second round of teacher observations. We have math curriculum presentation, so we have three publishers coming in that are curriculum director, who's sitting behind me, set up, and that's happening on January twenty first. So we'll be hearing from three publishers to try and possibly get an adoption ready to go. And then the youth frontiers kindness retreat is for fifth grade. That's been quite a longstanding tradition and that's January twenty fourth.
Mr. Hodges, do you have anything for us?
Just a few things. It's hard to believe, but the end of this week is, we're halfway through the school year already, so we have high school finals on Thursday and Friday. Just a reminder to parents that we've got an alternate schedule for high school kids, so if you've got any questions about that, please contact the office and we can get that out. It's been, it's been in my weekly emails, but just in case somebody doesn't get those, we can get that. We have a staff development day coming up on Monday, the twenty first, and the high school, the elementary school is going to be looking at math curriculum and the high school is going to be looking at some, doing some work with the top twenty training that we had. We had one of their speakers come and talk to us at the beginning of the year and that is all about school climate. Just a couple of other things I want to mention. Monday, the twenty eighth, Mrs. Hoffman and I will be doing a couple of different presentations. One for eighth grade parents whose kids are going into high school about high school registration and everything you need to be prepared for with that. And then immediately following that presentation, we'll do another one on A P classes and P S E O enrollment for upperclassmen. And then just a couple of thanks that I wanted to make. Thank you to Dave Peterson and his crew. He's been running so short staffed in this building at least all year long and he's been, he and his staff have been very responsive when we've had issues. So I just wanted to say, give him appreciation for that. And also to Amy Donback and Dorothy O'Reilly for their tech work up here. In my nine years, I think this has been the easiest, smoothest tech start to the school year that we've ever had and I want to say thank you to them for that work.
Thank you. Mr. Winchell, anything for the cause?
I do want to mention a couple of things. We found out late last week that La Crescent is going to drop the football schedule for the next two years. So that kind of throws a wrinkle into our football schedule, meaning that there's no perfect solution, but probably what's going to happen is we're going to look at playing zero week, which means you start the season one week earlier. So start on August fifth. Football, football will start August fifth. You'd have two games before school even started and you'd have to buy somewhere in your season as well too, so it'd be a different football season. Really, the only other options are playing a seven game schedule, which State High School League does not want to see that happen, or trying to cross districts. But with district football, that basically eliminated short schedules. Last year, there were two teams that met in Esco. One came from Nicolet and someone came from way out north and they met in the middle, which is Esco, which is like a three hour bus ride, so not ideal there either, so.
It came up at our superintendent's meeting and they talked a little bit about it, but nothing, the one thing no one could answer is what's the long term plan? We know this is a two year thing. What, what are the A Ds saying about that long term? Because this, this can't go forever. You can't start football August fifth. I mean, we might as well go in year round schooling if that's the case, so what's the long term?
Right. I, I think they're pretty confident it's just going to be a two year thing. I know last year, I think they drafted twenty kids for the first playoff team.
Okay.
Which in football, it just doesn't work and they graduated a bunch too, so I think they're confident they'll get those numbers back, but district realigning, again, in two years. This will be the first year of our first realignment. They're realigning in two years and if they're not going to have football, they put somebody else in there. That's the idea behind football and district football is to get full schedules for everybody. So it solves the problem for most people, but this year it's going to be an issue for us.
And then how will the bye week work? They'll draw?
Yep. So where we were supposed to play La Crescent all the year bye week and I think with the tentative schedule, it's not approved yet, we're right in the middle of our season, so. Which would be weird because then also there's, there's restrictions on college you can practice that week too. I think you can only practice like three of the days.
Oh yeah, it's.
So busy week, dance, host their invite this weekend. So if they ever got a chance to see their, the dance team this year, it's their last chance to see them at home, so dance team's on Saturday. Girls' basketball's home Tuesday and Friday. Wrestling's home on Thursday and then when I play competes on Saturday as well too, so. And then in community ed, our new brochure just came out last week, so hopefully you got that in your mailboxes and Lori worked very hard putting those classes together for us, so that's all I have.
Okay, no director of facilities and maintenance, no technology person either here tonight. Before I do that to you, I'm going to ask to hear from Emma.
Okay, um, Mr. Winchell talked about a lot what I was going to talk about, but I can. I can go over some, I have some scores though from the past week, so I can talk about those. So on Saturday, the dance team was in Recor, Recor, I think I said that right? And they got fifth place out of eighteen teams, which it's a really big and tough competition, so they did a pretty good job with that. Boys' basketball beat Goodhue last Thursday, fifty-five to forty, so that's pretty great. Girls' basketball played boards on Friday. They didn't do the best, but they have a whole game on Thursday, so that's, I mean, on Tuesday, so that's pretty exciting. Wrestling won this past Saturday against Minneapolis Southwest. And then a couple of other things. Last week, there was a P L C day, so all the clubs got to meet and lots of activity meetings going on, so people could meet up for those. This past Saturday, student council hosted the winter formal, which was Peppermint Forest, and it was a lot of fun. There was a lot of people there. I know I had a good time. I'm assuming a lot of people did too. And then kind of like Mr. Hodges was saying, it's finals week for high schoolers, so a lot of studying is going to be going on, so.
Thank you, Anna. Beth, you're, you're going to move your report down a little bit.
Sure.
That will be just fine. Public input. Anyone here wish to speak to the district about any concerns that they have, any, anything they'd like to be, like to bring forward? Again, we have the measured data privacy as well, so anyone here wish to speak to the board? Moving on. Under new business, consideration to review the Cannon Falls policy series one hundred, four hundred, seven hundred.
Right, and, and like you've seen before, you will see these policy, policy series come up. Whenever you get the agenda, you can click on it and you can review those. We have no changes on those. We do use M S B A as our policy kind of guidelines and all of that, so all of that is there. If you have any questions on them, I can, you know, anything specific, I can certainly answer those, but the one hundreds, four hundreds, seven hundreds are very standard and not ones that we use quite often. If you have any specific questions, you know, don't hesitate to ask, but that's how they'll come to you. They'll come to you in a group and then you can review them from there.
And the ones you do make changes on, you usually do in a different color or?
Yeah, we pull those out because we really want you to see the changes. We do get recommendations a lot from M S B A on what they recommend as changes. Whenever those come out, we put those as individual items and we typically do a first reading, a second reading, and then approve them. We never really want to just rush into those. We want to really make sure, because that policy is what guides your entire district, so we want to make sure.
And again, in order for people to find our policies that wish to find our policies, they're on the school website. And with just a little bit of knowledge on computer, you can, you can fish those, all of them out, all of the series out for review, so. Okay, we look for a motion to approve the consideration to review. Move by Bill. Second?
I'll second.
Second by Katie. All in favor of the consideration to review policy series one hundred, four hundred, seven hundred, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Consideration to approve policy one oh four, the district mission statement.
Okay, I have this up for you. It's, it's good to review this every year. We went through our long term strategic planning. This was a big part of that. There was a lot of teachers and staff and administrators involved in that process. And so if you've been in any gym, we have about the biggest, you know, banners you can have with our mission statement on them. We have it listed in our boardroom as well. We have it on our letterhead and things like that, so it is really important. In the next few years, I think we'll look at possibly changing that up as your strategic plan changes and where we want things to go, you, you always look at your mission statement as well. But it is stated as Cannon Falls Public Schools partnering with families and community, which we know is really important to us, will provide a nurturing, challenging, and inspiring environment to educate all individuals. And we didn't want to have just kids in there because we feel like adult education and early childhood and all of that, you know, all the way down to infant is really, really important. To be lifelong learners and responsible, productive citizens. So a lot of thought and process was put in this, so my recommendation would be to approve policy one oh four with a mission statement that's attached. But if you ever were interested in getting that changed, that would be part of that policy committee that we could look at if you wanted to.
I'll make a motion to approve the district's mission statement.
Thank you, Katie, on the motion. And a second?
I'll second.
Bill on the second? All in favor of approving policy one oh four, district mission statement, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is Carrie. Consideration to approve the field house language change from sixteen and older to high school and older. You may think this is all me because I've.
No, this is, this is me. I can own this one completely. When we went through that long conversation last year and worked really, really hard on who we wanted in the field house, you know, we didn't want it to be a drop off center and all of those things. Our custodial crew, our staff, everyone's been good about kind of kicking out kids that aren't sixteen years old. The problem that we kind of forgot is ninth graders. They are on C squad. They are required to do practices. They are required to be in the field house. And yet our sign says sixteen and older. I will own this. I didn't think that completely through. It really needs to say high school, meaning the minute you click over to ninth grade, you can now be in the field house alone. I think what we were thinking is who can drive themselves here would be a sixteen year old. A fifteen year old is required to be here, but you're telling them they can't be. It's a very strong mixed message. Parents have, probably the number one call I've gotten this year is this. My fifteen year old is on the A honor roll. They're, they're well behaved. It doesn't matter if you're fifteen, sixteen, eighteen, nineteen. If you're not behaving in there, you won't be asked back. And that has happened too, so it doesn't mean just a fifteen year old. I have a few fifteen year olds in the back there and they're very nice gentlemen. I'm sure they'll always be on their best behavior, but if they weren't, they would be asked to leave and be put on probation, those kinds of things. So it is my recommendation to change the wording to say high school and older versus sixteen and older.
You know, when you, when you look at the high school website and you find enrollment, it's based on nine through twelve.
Even the Minnesota high school league and all of that.
So it, it would seem like that's what they're dictating as their high school. On, on the other side of the coin, I think it's always been a, a drag for the custodians who are. On, on the other side of the coin, I think it's always been a, a drag for the custodians who are already very busy to feel like they have an obligation to monitor that if there's not adult supervision there. And that's why we created that age thing, but it's not up to them, they're just doing this to assist the district and making sure that's a, a clean fieldhouse, if you will. So, that would be the only drawback, and I know what it, you know, the, uh, the custodians feel an obligation to be checking on that from time to time, and I know that, you know, you gain some ownership by doing that, but I, I sure hope that they understand that this is not an obligation that they have to come through on. You know, if they see disruption, no matter if you're seventeen or fourteen, you still take care of that. But it shouldn't be their obligation to monitor the age. Agree? So, I'm in favor of this as well. I heard from one person, uh, independent of the many that you've heard of, I think, that was, that was not real pleased. When he says, "Coach tells us to go in and shoot whenever we're available, and we go in and shoot and we get the boots. We drop our kids off and by the time we get home, they're calling us and saying, 'We got kicked out.'"
Right.
We should feel very good about the facilities we have and we should feel, you know, it's incumbent on all of us when we see disruption there, people, to just, to step up. It doesn't make any difference if you're an audience taxpayer or anybody else. Disruption is disruption, so. Tell me how you feel about this.
I agree. I, I think it makes complete sense.
It was a very small error that I didn't catch.
Well, and I think that it's, it's very easy to not catch it, um, to not think of the factor of them being on a high school team and not being able to use the facility.
It was an innocent mistake.
And it's, I agree with you. No matter what their age is, if they're not respecting the property, they will be, and they will be prohibited from coming back, just like any other.
That's right.
Facility. Yeah. No, I agree. I'm in favor of this.
A separate issue with, at some point in time, I'd like to talk to you about opening that up on Thanksgiving and New Year's. So, my college kids, when they come home, can eat and enjoy themselves. Can walk if they need to walk, after that twenty-pound gain on Thanksgiving. We're family, and that's what we're supposed to do, that fieldhouse is for family. It's not just for athletes and their needs, so we'll have to revisit that at some point in time, but that's a whole nother story. Anybody else have any, anything?
Do we have eighth graders that play up on C-Squad teams?
We don't.
Okay. Is that something that we would need to consider going forward?
It could happen, um, but they aren't required, they're not on the C-Squad team. They are often asked sometimes to fill in, but they wouldn't be on that practice schedule.
Okay.
Is that, am I saying that correctly?
Yeah, it could potentially happen, we haven't had it recently, but it could happen, yeah.
And I still think it, saying high school is, is a good thing. I mean, just, uh, you gotta have a, you gotta have a cutoff.
Right.
List somewhere, you know, so.
Okay, what's your pleasure group?
I'll make a motion to approve that we change the language from sixteen and older to high school and older.
Motion by Katie.
Second.
Seconded by Anna. Other discussion? All in favor of this language change, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve a retirement request.
Yeah, this is kind of a sad one for me. Anne Schwadee has decided to retire. And if you know Anne, she's been with the district forever and dedicated her entire career, um, to special education. And I think one of the most special things about Anne Schwadee is the fact that she follows her kids after they leave school. If you talk to kids that have been on her caseload or been a part of her life, she follows them. She's been invited to their, you know, gatherings when they're grown adults and things like that. And she just has a really neat relationship with, with students and, um, I'm very thankful. I, I know she's excited about living at the cabin and those kinds of things, but, um, we just really wanna thank her for her years of service, cause just an absolutely remarkable teacher. Very, very amazing.
So, I would look for a motion to approve the retirement request.
Make a motion?
Brenda, on the motion. Seconded by Bill. All in favor of retirement request for Anne Schwadee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. With regrets.
Yes.
Consideration to approve a long-term subposition to a one-point-oh F.T.E. position, December fifteenth to end of year.
Thank you. We, um, have a second-grade teacher, um, that was filling in for Kylie Reich, um, and you're all aware of that. We are still just at a complete loss that, you know, she's no longer with us. But because of that, it's no longer a, um, long-term subbing position, we have moved her over to contract. I have worked with our legal, um, department to make sure that we're doing this all correctly and making sure that she's moved over to the seniority list correctly and all those things. Jennifer Chappie has been a part of all of this and we agree, um, not only is she just a perfect candidate for the long-term position, but she, she also is a great person to, to join our staff. So, it'd be my recommendation to approve this.
Look for a motion to approve the long-term sub, the position to a full-time. Anna? On the motion? Sorry?
I'll second.
Katie, on the second. Other discussion? Would December fifteenth, twenty eighteen be for, um, I guess, seniority date?
Yes, that's correct. She, you have to teach a hundred and twenty days to get tenure. This year, unfortunately, will not count towards her tenure. Ms. Chappie is definitely doing evaluations on her and, and watching her and all that. But she will have to start fresh for the three years, um, to be tenured at the beginning of next year.
So, it really doesn't play?
It really doesn't, but it, it's important that she get on that list. But yes, you're right, a non-tenure teacher, there's no real pecking order per se, but it's important that we allow her to move over to the, the full contract. Great question, though, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion to second on the floor. All in favor of moving the long-term subposition to one-point-oh, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to accept a resignation effective June thirtieth of twenty nineteen. Beth?
Yeah, um, I probably should have something written up. I'm, you all know, I'm really excited about an opportunity that's coming my way. I've been here my whole adult life. My kids don't know anything different, I don't know anything different. It's, it's time for me to spread those wings and go fly, and I've had great mentors like Bruce, who's in the front row, and, um, they know I'm ready, I know I'm ready. Talked to the board chairman of the other schools, St. Francis area schools, and he, uh, made sure I wasn't backing out tonight. You know, cause they're approving my contract up there. In June, I will prepare a, a proper statement and all those things, saying goodbye, but tonight is just more, um, just me resigning officially and so that you can find the next amazing superintendent. If anyone's heard me speak, and I know Bruce can attest to this and any of the administrators can, when I talk about Cannon Falls schools, it's non-stop amazing. I mean, everyone should be applying for this job because of everything I've said about this district. Everywhere I go, I wear Cannon Falls all over my heart, and I will always do that. But it's just, it's the right time and I'm really excited. The district I'm going to is huge, that makes me nervous, but again, um, this small-town girl can, can do some big-town things, I think, too, so. I appreciate everything, and like I said, in June, I'll make it a little more, um, a statement. Tonight, it's just more procedural, so. I'm leaving you, you need to find a new superintendent, I will work with M.S.B.A. the best that I can to help them, too, because, um, this school is my heart. I mean, when you've been somewhere as long as I have been, I, I don't know anything else. So, I want you to find that perfect person and, um, I will help them after I'm gone. Mr. Suster was amazing at that for me. He still answers calls, just so you know, he will answer his phone for me on things that I, um, maybe need, so. Sorry for getting a little emotional, but, um, this is, it's tough for me, this has been a big decision, so. Thank you for your support and everything you've done, and again, we'll talk in June, let's not worry about it now, but I will miss all of you very much.
You did look very well there.
I did okay, I did okay, I thought for sure I'd lose it.
You know, we've all watched your growth from, uh, I think you came to us after a couple of years in Cass, and if I'm not mistaken.
In South Washington County, yeah.
Okay. And so, you've, uh, you've cut your teeth moving right up the, moving right up the line, and that's not done very often at all for a superintendent. Usually, you, you hire somebody from without at some point in time, but you've walked the ladder and, uh, we appreciate all you've done for us. And we're all nervous, you're nervous about moving on, we're nervous about our next hire, but we are, because of you, we're comfortable that this will be, you know, um, a very good job for our next superintendent. And, and in large part because of you and where you've led us, so.
It's a great district, I, I've already had lots of friends reaching out, they're, you're gonna have amazing candidates, I promise you, they're very excited.
And we will, um, we'll defer the more long-term conversation on this at your last meeting, but, uh, we're just, uh, we're pleased at the time you put in with us.
Thank you.
So, okay, we have this, and people to ask. Does anyone ever wanna make a comment? That's, it's okay. You know, or do you wanna wait for the next?
You're gonna soar, so.
Yeah, we should probably not do comments.
Okay.
Don't wait till June, I'll be prepared.
Sounds good, Beth.
Okay, consideration to accept the resignation of our current superintendent effective June thirtieth. Moved by Bill. Second?
I'll second.
See, you're a tough second. We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. With regrets. Consideration to post and hire a superintendent position effective July one with an application closing date of two-twenty-five of twenty nineteen. The procedural next step. Any comments, Bruce? A little too early for comments?
We'll, we'll have information for you here in just a minute, but, uh, yeah, it's an exciting process.
So, this is part of our procedure, and here we go. So, um, I would look for a mo, a motion to post and hire for this position with the closing date of two-twenty-five, so we need to get moving.
So moved.
Anna? On the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Katie. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve a superintendent's search service to coordinate the training and search process. Incumbent on the board chair, if I look at one of these pieces of paper that Lori handed me, is to begin procedure or begin process as the board chair. Brenda and I met with, um, some admin, some department heads, and essentially, so we're all on the same page, and what are we looking for? And what are our priorities? We spoke for probably forty-five minutes to an hour. And, um, because of the time that these searches can take, and everybody has a full-time job, and the amount of time that it would take would almost be prohibitive these days. Plus, there's been changes in the way, um, in the way selections began. When we hired Mr. McGuire some twenty-plus years ago, we had eight different groups, or six different groups, and they just passed these applicants, these finalists around, must've been brutal. And, um, it is our hope after we, uh, after discussion that, um, the search committee will include, include the M.S.B.A., who we've always felt has worked on behalf of our individual district and all districts. So, it was a recommendation coming out of that, that group, that we, um, use the M.S.B.A., but of course, that's your decision. We found that, um, um, search committees can be sixty-five-hundred dollars and up, but mostly up. And, uh, although we haven't entered into any contracts with M.S.B.A., they are on the low end of things for us. And, uh, part of that service belongs to our membership as well as, um, just the need to find, help us find the right person for this job. So, we haven't gotten any, into any type of discussion with them, but, um, I think it's important for the M.S.B.A. reps to at least discuss their process with us, so we understand. So, uh, could you introduce yourselves, Sandy?
Sure. Sure, um, my name is Sandy Gunlock, and I live for the Minnesota School Boards Association. I'm director of school board services, and my primary duty there is, um, is conducting superintendent searches. I'm looking at my eighth search in my career, so I, it's helpful to know that I've got, it's not the first one. And I'm here tonight with a colleague, uh, Bruce Klein, and, um, he was just joining our consultants team. Uh, but anyway, did you want me to just sort of walk through some of the highlights in our search, you know, process? Is that what you would like?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I think that, I did bring some copies, um, I think there's some folks who love to look at things, and I think the board has copies, right?
You know, I hate to put, I hate to put you on the spot and just say yes. At the same time, I think it's a, it's important to, for us to understand what kind of services that you give us and even relative to maybe the, the, the other search services that are out there. Because, uh, M.S.B.A. has always worked on behalf of the districts, we pay membership for that, I'm sure this has somehow worked into that, so.
Sure, you know, um, if you're, in, in the booklet on page one, everything I wanna stress is that, um, M.S.B.A. coaches that we represent the board, uh, it really is your search, so we'll be looking for your guidance at every step of the process. Ultimately, it's your decision, um, who you're going to hire, it's your hiring criteria, not ours, all those kinds of things. So, if we turn to page two, uh, just get a quick overview of the, um, the, the next thing we, you know, if you decide to hire, um, M.S.B.A. to help you with the search, what we'll do is we'll schedule an initial planning meeting, and at the planning meeting, we'll, we'll help you develop the timeline, the hiring criteria, uh, we'll bring a working draft copy of a recent announcement, um, you know, and we'll talk about the stakeholder opportunities and what you want that to look like in your district. And speaking of the stakeholder opportunities, this particular proposal includes five options, five opportunities. The first is an online survey, we use Survey Monkey. And what we do is we send the, um, the survey leads over to the district, you embed it in your, in your website for it, and it's there for about two weeks, so folks can fill it out at their convenience. But we also, um, uh, conduct what we call facilitated listening sessions, and we'd spend a day or two in the district, meeting with, uh, community members, uh, staff members in large groups, but also conducting some one-on-one interviews with selected, um, staff and their community members, and then also with individual board members. And then the other, and then we take all that information, the survey-related information, the information from the listening sessions and from the one-on-one interviews, and, and, uh, develop a summary, if you will, of that information and, and, uh, provide it back to the board. And, um, the, most likely, that information, and given the process that we've got recommending, that would be recommending for you, that information would be used then to help you develop the interview questions. Circle some additional items. Yeah, the two other options that we have, um, is that we also conduct, um, in conjunction with the second round of interviews, we call it facilitated community, a staff Q and A session. What happens is, uh, one of us will be available in the room, uh, folks would submit the questions to us, we, we give the questions aloud, and those same questions would be used for each candidate who's brought, got brought in for that second round of interviews. So, there's some consistency, that's an important thing to us. Um, and, and I think to the board. And then the, the other one is, the last item is that, um, we know that a lot of boards, um, these, I'm a former board member, um, a lot of us, you know, like to have others, folks involved in the process. But, um, we, so we provide training, uh, for those, um, what we would call now board members, if you will, staff and their community members, uh, because we think it's very important that they follow the same rules and guidelines as the board would follow. Such as the interview questions, everything standardized, but the more, most importantly, um, you're the board, you make the hiring decision, other folks are serving an advisory capacity, um, and helping everyone be clear about what that role might be. And that's, that's the training piece. And then, um, in terms of, on page three, it gives you a little overview of the, uh, once you, once you've settled on the, um, well, actually, once you decide you're gonna work with M.S.B.A., uh, if we have the application deadline, we can begin, you know, that posting that notice tomorrow morning already on our website, Superintendent's Association website, EdPost, and then in Northern South Dakota, similar websites. But, and we can do that without having finalized the, uh, the vacancy announcement. It just gives everyone a head kind of a head start, if you will, to the whole process. Uh but once the vacancy announcement is finalized, with all of the information in there about with all of the dates and with hiring criteria, information about the district, then we send out an email to we start sending out emails to um folk superintendents, folks on our list, advertising the position. Of course, it goes up on our website. It goes to all of those other same so all those other websites that I mentioned previously, but it'll have the more, you know, in-depth information of what you're looking for. And then we also do uh reach out to folks. We may we test them like that. Uh pick up the phone and make some calls, just make sure that people are aware of the position, see if they have any questions, those kinds of things as we're all working our way through that, what we would call the application screening. So that gives you a little bit of the and also MSBA is a member of um what we call the National Association of Superintendent Searches. It's it's the um it's forty state school board associations that conduct superintendent searches. We work with each other in reaching out to folks uh uh who are in who who are who work in other states, if you will. And then we also help each other with reference checks on those candidates who may apply from other states as well. So we we have a really good national reach to our our um colleague, if you will, associations. Uh then if you look at page four, just real quick, um about two weeks before the application deadline closes, there's um we return to the district and we we conduct what we call that interview training, where we would interview train the board members, but also any non-board members who might participate in the process. So everybody's on the same page about the questions and expectations and those kinds of things. Um and I already mentioned that before, that's a real important part of the process. Uh the other thing we would do is develop the interview questions and start talking about the the first round of interviews, that the schedule and what that may look like, and sort of get a little bit of a glimpse of that second round as well. Uh but of course, the second round touch no on that one because it depends on the first round in terms of how many people you'd be bringing back and also the questions. So it's a tough one to get started on much before that first round of interviews is happening. Uh then the other thing, if you look on page five, it's one of the ways in which our searches are a little bit different than some searches, is that um once the application deadline passes, uh we um have a team of five uh people who review all of the applications first for completeness, and we send the incomplete ones aside. Then we focus on the one the folks who provided all the required paperwork. And then we look at those individuals against your hiring criteria, and we just start we decide as a team who uh flows to the top, if you will, um against your hiring criteria. And we focus on those individuals for the rest for the next several days while we conduct um initial verification of references and um what we would call pre-interviews. But that is, it's just an opportunity for the candidates to practice some superintendent superintendent interview-type questions, but it also gives us a chance to know them better as well. Um then probably about a about a week after the application deadline passes, then we have come back to the district and present candidates that we've got stood out in the pool. I do wanna go back to that screening meeting for just one moment. After we complete the screening meeting, we package up all of the um completed applications and we get them to the district so that board members can go in and review them individually on this uh preset schedule of some kind uh prior to the meeting, at which we would come back to the district and present the candidates. I think it's a real important part of your due diligence that you at least know who all apply. Um and then we'll talk more about what that all means um a little closer to that time. And so that you can look at it um, it's mostly to know who else is in there, but maybe not to fall in love with the candidates because you just never know about uh about a lot of things. Um and so we would do that probably by Pony Express or something rather than the mail. Sometimes found that it sometimes takes more than overnight on things, so we'll figure out the process to get things to you so that you can handle as soon as possible. Nothing wrong with the mail, but we just found that sometimes it seems to run. Um then uh we um the the rest of the process that we talk about is is similar to what most folks would use. Um you know, there's the application deadline, the review, see who stands out in the pool, come back to the district, present the candidates. Once we present the candidates, of course, you then would have that conversation about it basically is do you agree? And then, because you would have had an opportunity to review all of the all of the applications, then you may have a question about, well, what about candidate X or Y or whatever, which reminds me of the fact that all these are must be held in open session. Uh just so you know, if there's no condition or statute that allows any needing to be closed. Um but we could keep talking about all those things. Then there's also some sensitivity with the with the applications, which would also be we would also provide training and discuss that piece with you as well. So once you decide who you're going to interview, um that by their statistics, then we would schedule those folks for you for the first round of interviews. Uh we'll be at we would be on site uh for the first and second round of interviews. You would see people moving around from group to group, uh help everything that's moving those people. Uh then help uh assist with the development of um some uh public service tech announcements that, you know, announcing each step of the process and uh in terms of who who's selected for the first round of interviews, who's advancing for the second round of interviews, and then the um selection of that finalist, or the lone finalist, as some people might call them. Uh the other thing that our this particular proposal offers is that um after the new superintendent begins working in the district, this information is actually on page five. Um the follow-up is that um you know, we'll meet with that person throughout that that pursuit of service in the district. But the other thing is that I think it's real important to come back to the district in in probably July or August for um an in-district workshop to help set up the um the new superintendent's um performance evaluation for the coming year, or at least spend time clarifying expectations throughout so the board and superintendent are on the same same page, if you will. Uh it's important to do that in July or August when it's still really fresh and has the best opportunity for uh implementation, the ten men. And then if you can see on page six, just gives an outline of all of the things that I talked about, we talked about them. Uh you know, outlines all the and um gives the price point at sixty-eight hundred and includes all of our expenses to and from the district. Um and then on page seven is our satisfaction satisfaction guarantee. Um and that is that if something happens after the first year and it doesn't work, then we will be back in with the district to help them with that that surge. And then also then finally then on page um page eight is a tentative timeline. Uh it just kind of helps to jump things out uh along the way. This one actually goes into May, but I think um one of the things I think I have heard that might be interesting is something is a shorter timeline. Uh get where that person would probably be uh contract finalized probably by April. And and that is something that would be a doable thing if that is what the board wanted. Then then at the beginning on page nine, this provides information about our search team. One thing you should know is that um we don't have the information here yet on Andrew's plane and uh um Gary Gary Poopall, who are two new um MSBA consultants, and information's not really distributed, but will be in our proposals going forward. Uh but we do have information on Dave Toss and who would be a second person who would be in this search if uh you decide you're in with us. Any questions?
We talked about it, I'll go ahead.
Oh, I just had a question as far as the difference between if we were to do it on our own and the privacy of an applicant, is there a difference in that their own district that they're applying from? Because at some point, we're gonna announce the key to the finalists, but does a applicant that we were to go it alone need to tell their employer at that point?
Yeah, you know, I I'm not really sure what your question is, but one thing I can I can answer it this way. The names of applicants is private data. Um and so that's regardless of who does the search, whether it's a district-led search or if someone else helps you, all of them is a private. Um except at the meeting where you decide who you're going to interview, candidate A, B, X, Y, and Z, or whatever, or one, two, five, nine, ten, um then at that point, the names are pri- are public data. So at that point, it it would become public to the public, yeah. And so how we, and I think most people, of what approach it, is that um when we reach out to those individuals who stand out in the pool, we just remind them that first of all, we noticed you, but there's no guarantee you'll be interviewed because this is the board's decision. That's our belief is that. And then uh but if you are, your name will become public. Have you talked with your board chair or wh- or whomever? And so if they haven't, at that point, they usually indicate to someone that they are they're looking. Uh and if you know, if if they're lucky, they might be offering an interviewer. So it's kind of about the same. We try to have large sensitivity. The most important thing, though, is maintaining the confidential confidentiality of the names up to that point of the ones who are offered interviews. And then, but also remembering that the names of those not offered interviews remains private data. That is also an important part of the the whole piece that gets more people confident that how their data, their pri- their private.
That would be my concern, though.
I know from a candidate's perspective, and maybe I'm not supposed to interject here, but candidates are more interested when a a consulting firm is running it because they feel like it is such a big deal once your name is out there. Um so there's some comfort sometimes when it's that. Just I know like a personal experience, when it's a a firm, they tend to follow those procedures maybe a little better than when you're doing it in-house.
And then the the second question I had is the last item that we just approved is uh the closing date of February twenty-fifth. Would we put a time on there? And then that mean that evening be looking to announce the candidates?
Oh, okay. Thank you for asking that. Actually, all that would mean is that's when the application deadline ends. And then the rest of the work begins. And the rest of the work is first the next day, the twenty-sixth, if you want with that date. Then the twenty-sixth, we at MSBA, our five-member team, would review all of the the applications. We'd do the Pony Express to get them up here to you. And then we'd have our about six days or something to um conduct the initial verification of references on those individuals, et cetera. And then about a week later, then we'd be back to you. You'd decide who you're going to interview. So it would go much longer than that. The twenty-fifth is just the application deadline.
Okay, so.
Possibly, yeah. That's what you decide.
So the timeline would really probably be the first meeting meeting in March, possibly?
You mean the um.
And that we would actually see candidate names?
Probably, yeah. Uh well, actually, you know, if you know, according to how we would want to set it up, if the twenty-third is the application deadline, we'd get those applications to the district on the twenty-sixth, and during the twenty the twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, and the first, and then depending on when your meeting is loca- you know, individual board members would go in individually and re- read all of the completed applications. So then when you come to that meeting on the first or second or eighth or whatever of March, that's to be determined yet, you would have seen the names of all the people and had an opportunity to read all of their files. And then we, when you meet up, when we come to meet with you at that early March meeting, whatever day, let's say it's the fourth or something, then we present ones that we as a team thought stood out in the pool. And then again, you would your job, it's it then it becomes your work, and you say, do we agree? And then you go from there, type of thing, adding in people if you want an extra person added or however. Because remember, you decide when you're ready to interview. And then once that meeting is done, then we contact the candidates who are being inter- who will be interviewed and get them scheduled for you. Does that answer your question?
Yes, I think so. It's just.
Lot of dates, lot of dates.
Yeah, lot of dates and, you know, just trying to meet that April timeline of.
You'll be able to do it because um once we um when we come back from the initial planning meeting, we we ask people to bring your calendars and set the dates. And then those dates are really beca- are locked are locked pretty much locked in stone because we they're advertised. And most boards wanna just make sure they follow through on their timeline, unless there's a snowstorm, you can't help that. You know, that has happened, and everyone gets pushed out of the. Yeah, you know, but but you know, if you look at it this way, once the application deadline passes, it probably takes about three to four weeks to to get to the point where you are approving the contract at a at a school board meeting. It goes fast because um it'll be the application deadline. About a week later, we'll be back. You say yes or no to who you're going to interview. Uh and then we even go so far as to suggest that you hold a first round of interviews at the end of that that week. So if we're here on a Monday night, then we suggest that you hold the first round of interviews on Thursday, Friday, or Friday, Saturday. And then um the second round of interviews, already the following week, like on maybe Wednesday. And then, once you get to that meeting, you're deciding uh if we have enough information to uh make a decision, you extend an offer of employment to someone. And then talk about the parameters of the contract and the um process for negotiating the contract. And then, you know, we contact the candidate for you and all that sort of stuff, and then things come from there. But you but it's possible they decide they want you want to um you need a little more information. You've got candidates who are equally equally strong. Uh some were up, we work with boards that have decided to conduct site visits in that case. And then that would just delay your decision about a week, everything a week. But it's a good process, and it's something that's used by really some fair some version of it is used by really pretty much every search firm out there.
I would I would just add that keep in mind that um these are probably people who are out, might possibly be looking elsewhere. So you wanna be aggressive in getting the best candidate, and to let that linger could could hurt your chances.
Exactly. That's what I was kind of wondering on the timeline, and and when are we giving the the list of names? And because as they're also searching.
There's competition.
There's competition.
You really are ahead of the game, though.
Yes, I think you're in good shape at this point.
Yeah.
Um it looks like when you when we got some previous information that, or I did anyway, excuse me, that um it looks like it's almost an a la carte process for us. We can pick and choose at what level we're gonna use you. Is that?
Well, yeah, we I oh, gosh, I didn't really bring that sheet of paper. Um I'm kind of rushing my head now. But, you know, we you know, we have this basically five levels, if you will. There's the one basic level where um just for membership, you know, people can post their the opening on our website, and we'll answer whatever search questions you may have. You know, then the next level would be um, you know, if hiring the right superintendent, it's an in-district workshop, and it's all the basics, and it's everybody on the same page with the board as with itself with staff support. And then the next level up is is what we would call the in uh we it's an initial planning meeting is basically what it is. And it it's the it's the um the workshop plus the planning session. So when we leave, um that it it you've got the roadmap pretty clearly marked. Um that there's a timeline, the hiring criteria, um the uh beginning of each of the vacancy announcement, and then everything, first round of interview questions, and then it's turned over to the board, and the board takes any ones with it. Then we have what we call a limited um engagement search. And that is the hiring of the right superintendent workshop. It's the initial planning meeting. But then we receive the applications. Uh we sort through them again for that completeness. Then we identify who stands out in the pool, comes back to you. Uh we present the candidates at that time. You decide who you wanna interview. We schedule uh the candidates for the first round of interviews, help with the get, you know, set you up with the first round of interview questions and the schedule. It just started thinking about the second round of interviews, and then we step back. And then the board takes it from there. And then the next one is is really the uh what we put the full search. And the differences, um all of those other things, basically, plus um it's the stakeholder involvement piece that we don't have in the other options. And then it's being onsite for the first and second round of interviews, and even candidates, et cetera, have to facilitate that part.
You know, Sandy, I've made you go through so much work here when the outcome is whether or not we're gonna use a search committee or not. I'm I'm sorry for that. I just this may be redundant if we have an upcoming meeting soon, which is the next thing on the agenda. I would just like to uh, this will be my fourth superintendent search, so because of Barbara, we can't keep anybody. Those searches have been very long, very tedious at times. We've done them all ourselves. We've never stepped out to a committee before. And I will tell you that is it's more work than you predict. And being that we don't have a just an overall ton of experience on the board, we have to at least check in to see if these folks can help us, along with our staff, predetermined staff. And uh they could again come to our our uh subsequent meeting if we can get that scheduled and and in the next agenda item. So um the reason for the a la carte is I just wanted people to know that we can pick and elevate our service as we want. And a lot of these questions, I think, will be answered if we choose a search committee and if we choose these folks. And a lot of these questions I think will be answered if we choose a search committee and if we choose these folks at that upcoming meeting that I'd like to see scheduled for the twenty-second. So we can keep on task. It's very important to keep on task. So could I get a recommendation to approve a search service to coordinate the training? We can talk at the, at the subsequent meeting about just what we want to purchase and just what we want to use. But for now, a search service, I think is what we're okay.
But not necessarily the level of search, just?
No, we're. Sandy had sent a, a list, just like she says, of things. I think we can discuss that at the subsequent meeting. Really want to engage these folks or say, no, we want to use somebody more expensive?
Good one.
Is that not right? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. That's just the way it is. So.
That is a true statement. I'll make a motion to approve the superintendent's search.
Brenda, you're making a.
Service.
A service and to use MSBA.
Yes, well, that's, doesn't say that.
No, it doesn't say it on there, but your motion would approve a superintendent's search service and to use the MSBA as our service.
Yes, that's my motion.
I'm just making sure. Motion by Brenda.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Bill, to use the MSBA as our superintendent's search service to coordinate the training and search process. Any other discussion?
So just for clarification for myself, is, so we're not saying we know what, at what level. Because I'd like to know at what point we can afford this. Because I know we're looking at if we wanted to build that fund balance that we need to, if we're going to be looking at cuts again or it's. So I'm just trying to be proactive and thinking about what our affordability is. So I would like to definitely see that list and, and what, what it all entails before making a decision. So we're not like making a decision that, hey, we're.
What we're going to spend tonight and if we're going to spend tonight.
Okay, okay. Yep, then that's fine.
And so.
I just wanted to clarify, just for my own.
I think, you know, if we get to that next meeting, what we're saying to these folks now is they're not going to do it for free. We just have to decide what level.
What level we want to do.
Yeah. You know, if, if we get a, if we burst a pipe in the school, we, we have to get it fixed regardless. Regardless of what it costs us. I think this goes along those same lines. We, we have to employ a service to assist us in doing this. I, you know, from all indications, even Beth making her statement, we're going to get some quality people.
Sure.
Geographically, we're in great shape, so.
Want to make sure.
Yeah, we don't want to, we don't want to spend money.
This still allows you to post the position tomorrow though, no matter which à la carte they pick.
Yes.
Good, because a lot of people.
Yeah, we don't need one.
And it, it says in here that this proposal, the professional fee for this search proposal shall not exceed sixty-eight hundred dollars. Is that the five, that's the top level? So the most we would pay if we went with your highest level of service would be sixty-eight hundred dollars.
Okay, sounds good to know too. The limited search is.
Worth them.
It's like four thousand two hundred or something like that? Okay, just give you that. Okay.
And likely at sixty-eight hundred, it's probably less than any other search firm.
Oh, I'm guessing, yes, I agree completely. No, I am in total agreement with going with MSBA. That's for sure. But yeah.
Any other discussion items? Now we have a motion, the second on the floor, to approve the superintendent's search service used by MSBA to coordinate things at a price and a level to be determined at the next meeting that both have. All in favor of this, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, I was an aye too, sorry. Okay, I, I reached out to all of you and, and thinking whatever we do, whatever service we use, we have to get moving. And so January twenty-second seemed about the best next available date to use. As long as I'm asking, we have some very, very organized staff and a staff that wants involvement in there. The board will be at this June twenty-second meeting and.
You mean June?
June.
June will be late, won't it?
But my question is about others invited. Now, since it's an open meeting, anyone can attend, but yet we'll be invited some, inviting some selected people, administrators and such, that we want a part of that process that, like you said, eventually can be when we get into the Q and A, correct?
Right, correct. No, and I think that at that meeting on the twenty-second, I think one of the things that you'd get more clear about is what you really want and, and what that would all look like. I think that would be really good. But I, at the extent that I, they, I think those folks, the extent that they participate in the different meetings, I think are sitting in the audience, helps them understand the whole process themselves, et cetera.
Okay, the next item is consideration to, to set a special board meeting for January twenty-second, twenty nineteen at six P M for the initial planning meeting for the superintendent's search process. Most of you have indicated that you do have some time to give us on that, on that evening. And if so, I, it's incumbent on us to get moving. So I would look for a motion to approve the special board meeting. It doesn't, it doesn't have a place, but we assume it's here, right?
Correct.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the special board meeting on January twenty-second at six P M.
Katie, on the motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Anna. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, thank you for your indulgence on this. Okay. The next meeting will be that special meeting and the one and only topic on our agenda will be the continuance of the superintendent's search. And MSBA folks will be bringing in reams of paperwork that we can look at. And thank you for attending, by the way, for clearing things up for us. So again, there's the MSBA conference coming up very shortly. And our next regular board meeting will be January twenty-eighth at six P M. We'll discuss spring head coaches at that time. And just, we'll see one another at the leadership conference coming up this week. And anything you have that you would like some discussion on for the subsequent board meeting, just plug into Beth or Lori. And many times we, we have things researched at the, at the committee level first. So if you're on the committee that you have some interest in bringing something forward, let it by your group first and then we'll put it on the agenda. Anything else for the cause? If not, I would look for a motion to adjourn. If not, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are finished.